Good.
Yeah.
You are. So, I mean, now.
That's been trying.
Probably. Just. Well, that's true. We're gonna record it. I'm all fine.
Yeah.
You speak fine. You speak fine.
Yes, we don't have time to be funny. I said, I only have fun when I'm by myself.
I don't know why. Yeah, it's recording now. I'm going into laughter because I was with some friends or.
He's not.
And.
All right, six o'clock, let's call the meeting order. Please stand to the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, also, we're going to read our mission statement. In partnership with the communities, the mission of the Dewar Bundafeld School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong learners. We have board members, all but Laura Adams coming in a few minutes late, and then Brittany Keel is not for this evening, she had a work commitment. So, all other board members are present as Superintendent Hunstead, our community ed director Tracy Tullison, food service director Shannon Noack, and Brittany, not Brittany, Brooke, our wonderful district Brooke Bogus, sorry, excuse me, keeps us all organized. So, thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by me, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other comments, rebel recognition, there's no comments tonight, but do we have some rebel recognition you'd like to share?
We do. Thank you for asking. Tracy's here tonight, and so is Shannon, but they each have something that they wanted to share. So, recognition from the community ed we want to thank. Thank you so much to our health office for supporting our students at Rebel Kids Care, early childhood and across the district. We appreciate the support you give our students when they show up and need care, which there's quite a bit of that, so it's good. So, we thank them for that. And if you don't know, and you probably do know, in fact, I'm sure you all do, about our milk debacle that we had, and we couldn't get cartons, and so we had to have a lot of different people help. So Shannon just says during the milk debacle, thank you to all the staff who stepped up and helped pour milk last week. We had custodians, we had teachers, we had pairs, we had whatever, maybe even students, I don't know. But anyways, so kudos to them. And then we have another one that's kind of a big deal. Carrie Westcart is a teacher at our school, obviously in the middle school in Glendon. She was recognized October 5th with a 2023 Outstanding Educator Award. Carrie is one of three educators being honored by the Synergy and Leadership Exchange for outstanding accomplishments and contributions to student learning. Her award comes in the Teacher Achievement category, which recognizes exemplary teachers who support, inspire, and assist students to attain greater learning as evidenced by student achievement. Synergy and Leadership Exchange is a nonprofit organization and a program of the South Central Service Cooperative. So, kudos to her and congratulations to her. And I took, I said I printed up the picture too to share with you guys, so this is when she received her award, so I can pass that around later too. We also put it out on social media, so if you saw it on that. So, kudos to her and congratulations to her. We're still working on maybe getting that in the Fargo form.
That would be nice. Very nice.
So, some really neat stuff, so.
For sure. That's an awesome award, congratulations.
Very much.
To Carrie on that, she's a fantastic teacher, my kids have all had her and just absolutely speak outstanding of her, so we're very lucky to have her.
We are.
Any other rebel recognition team? Lots of fall activities going on, lots of fall activities, kids are having fun. I was a great win the other night at the volleyball game. I wasn't there, I listened to it on the radio, so that was a lot of fun, but. All right, let's move on, reports. Tracy, you're up, 6.1, is DJ on early childhood report?
Do updates for us in early childhood, as we started out the fall, our first week of school, we started out with screenings of all of our early childhood kiddos that needed screenings. So, we did about 72 screenings that first week of school, and then we rolled into classes starting September 11th. Overall, we have one TOTS class that's taught by Mrs. Rinkie and Ms. Tenet Bierke, who also does appear in that room. In the morning session, we have 20 kids, that's kind of our number, we want to not go above. You'll also see, we kind of identify also what is the ratios of that class for each class on your sheet, 20 kiddos, and then we have a couple spent kids in each class. So, afternoon session, we have 15. And moving on to school readiness, that's where we have two morning sections of school readiness taught by Mrs. Fox and Mrs. Rams, along with the pairs that go in those rooms as well. When you look at the numbers for that, 15 in the morning, one section, 13 in another, so, you know, numbers are continuing to grow, so that's a, that's a good trend. Afternoon, we have 13 as well, so our TOTS class is that one class where if we had more room, we would utilize it. I visited today with Shannon and Marcus a little bit as we looked at our Rebel Kids Care, childcare, K5, Rebel Kids Care, along with early childhood. And one of the things that we are looking at doing probably in the next week is for early childhood in Deworth, we do have three rooms, one for TOTS, two for school readiness, along with a motor room for some of our special ed kiddos to use. When it comes to childcare, we currently use two rooms. And looking at our numbers, when we decided to open up the opportunity for families to go from the five days of childcare down to three days, some families have opted out of some of that childcare piece, and they've reduced down to three days. So, in visiting with Marcus and Shannon today, we are going to utilize the gross motor room down in early childhood as another space for our TOTS to move to when they get busy with large room, storytime, crafts, so that the four rooms that we have down there, we're going to utilize those all for early childhood. We will have another room, two doors down, that we're going to use for the motor room. So, it's not far to go, and it'll meet our needs and allow that larger TOTS class to kind of break out into some other different, different space. With our early childhood, we're going to be starting up a couple evening classes, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Megan Olgard is going to teach that along with help from Harry Krebs and Don Brasset as a para to do that parent ed piece. So, we'll be offering that in November and going into January, so that we share it out with families in the community through our new newsletter that we put out, we have online for a lot of the community ed programs that we have. One of the things that we visited a little bit with Marcus and Shannon on was for our, I know this focus is mainly early childhood, but some of it just blends so much together that we are going to break out the expenditures and revenue for childcare. So, as a board, you're going to be able to see really for community ed funds, what is Rebel Kids Care childcare, what is Rebel Kids Care K5, and what is early childhood, TOTS, and school readiness, and ECFE classes. I had shared some information with both of them on what is some projected revenue, what is some of the expenses that we have. As we started our, our program for childcare, there is some upfront costs you have to incur, you know, new tables, new equipment, things like that. With that said, that, that will offset as we get into probably July and August, because when we started in September, our fiscal year starts July 1st, so we didn't have the revenue in July and August. Or next year, we will have that for both of those, both of those areas. One of the other areas that we talked about, we highlighted a little bit, is with our revenue, where does that come from? Obviously, our aid, our entitlement, aid entitlement, our home visiting, and our $28,000 for pathways that we use for those students that are age, income eligible, and meet that age requirement. So, we utilize those. I did read with Kristin Cadree, who helps us out with our state reports and our screenings, and we truly went through and looked at that $28,000 that we do have for pathways, and we allocated that according to some of our students that qualify. We have to allocate it for those things. So, some of our students will benefit from that. She'll be communicating to those 10 families that you qualified for the scholarship, and this is what will offset the cost for you. So, she's going to be communicating that as well. Another big piece for us in early childhood is the revenue that we bring in based on tuition. And as a board, when we set those rates, say for childcare, we set the rates at if they wanted to come to just childcare, it was $180 a week. But if they come to both, it's 60 for early childhood and 120 for childcare. So, we wanted just to make sure when you're seeing the reports, you're truly seeing this is the money that's in school readiness, TOTS versus childcare versus K5, so that Marcus is going to work on getting that additional account set up so that that's, that's clear for everybody. The classroom space, I overviewed a little bit on that, and one of the things that we met on budget-wise is when we look at childcare, we did see some of our families opt, like I say, to go to three days, so they might not need that childcare piece, but we know that it's going to continue to grow. With our students, accounts growing for each grade, the numbers are only going to, to grow. But in visiting with Shannon and Marcus, right now, I had recommended that we really scale, scale our childcare to one classroom, because right now, when I looked at all of the students that attend childcare, we open at 6:30, we close at 6:00. So, when you look at the students that arrive, we have them separated Rebel Kids Care K5, Rebel Kids Care childcare, and if we don't need that para in the morning for childcare, let's just have that one student that comes before 7:00 go right to K5. If it works, because they don't arrive until like 10 to 7:00. So, we really were having a para there at 6:15 and really sitting idle for about 35 minutes. So, we're looking at the hours that we have students coming, when is our big block of time? So, we are going to reduce that morning para for childcare, we're going to have them go to K5, it'll work just fine. We're going to go from two childcare rooms to one, because our ratios, we'd want to keep it like that one to 10, and right now, we're at 20 kids, so it works good. The, the one thing that we talked about was if that number grows, and we have, say, more than a couple people on the waitlist, and we get up to 10, we'll have a conversation and probably opening up another room. But right now, I visited with Mary Ann Martin from Special Ed, Brittany and Wayne, and talked about, we do have the two childcare rooms. Right now, one of the new kindergarten teachers is down in another wing, and they communicated with her today that she now will be able to be positioned right next to her peers for other kindergarten classes. So, by next Wednesday, the one childcare room we do have, we're going to move a lot of that down to that gross motor room and utilize that equipment and tables, and then we're going to have that kindergarten teacher move into our existing childcare room, right adjacent to the playground. So, it really is a win-win for everybody, cost savings, we're utilizing the space, the staffing, to the best benefit of, of the district, I would say. When it comes to screenings, we've done 72, and we are adding conferences this year for three, four, and five-year-olds, so a lot of families have signed up, probably have about 15, we do have 100% participation, but we'll see. But we keep sending messages through our Brightwheel, and, and I would say that when it comes to our Brightwheel app, you can message through that, that's one of the features we added in the last six months. It does all of our messaging for us, and it does all of our billing and collection of revenue. So, we don't have to go out and send people an invoice or an email saying, please pay your childcare bill. All of our families pay their childcare two weeks in advance. So, we collect that revenue, and we know that we don't get too far behind by any means. So, it's been, been really good. But again, the program is going well, great staff, it's been busy, but. Any questions on early childhood or anything else?
We had a lot of good discussion today, Marcus, Tracy, and I, and a lot of it is when you start something new, this Rebel Kids Care for three and four-year-olds, okay, we also had the other one last year with K5, and what's happened, what happened over the summer. That's really what you heard her say too, or Tracy reporting, is that we need to break it down, so even for me, I'm trying to go, okay, well, how much is coming in on that, and where is that going? And we're covering our teachers yet. It was nice to see how we're able to do what we do with the facilities we have, and then also cover our costs. So, it's, it's just, it's working out really good for the first year. We're kind of rolling the dice, so I just appreciate all Tracy's work and her staff. That's, it's really gone well, so, thank you.
And I think the one thing for us, for the early childhood care, is just to see 35-plus kindergartners join Rebel Kids Care this summer before they start at kindergarten, so they get the experience of being in schools, school lunch, and all that fun stuff, so it's been good. If you have questions, nothing else.
All right, thank you, Tracy.
I'm light, but though, because we have hosting basketball teams tonight, and I have good things to do before 7:00.
No worries, thank you, Tracy. You're constantly on the go, so we don't. 6.2, food service report, welcome Shannon.
You're next. I'm next, but you're being everybody. So, I kind of wanted to follow up with where I recorded in April, we are still working on our farmer school grant, we have added a few more farmers to our list, and one fun thing we got to do over the summer is we had our summer feeding program in Deworth, and we got two CSA shares to farm in Lendale, at Morehead, and they are a local farming co-op that employs people with disabilities, and it's just a fantastic opportunity. So, every Tuesday, they brought fresh veggies in, and we got to serve them right on our salad bars for our summer feeding. Another fun thing we got to do a couple weeks ago, a senior here in Glendon approached me about he sells corn on the cob, and he was wondering if I would be interested in putting it on the menu. So, after a few discussions, we did, and we shipped 620 corn on the cobs and it went on the menu. And it was, it was a lot of fun. He was so excited, he came that Monday at 6:30 in the morning, rolling up in his truck, and he's been, and in every sense, and just keeps, keeps talking. And this is something, you know, even once he graduates, I told him, come back and visit with me next year, you know, let's, let's keep this going. So, you know, in, in these conversations, I'm hoping that I've rounded in a future agriculture leader there. I keep telling him that if he doesn't know what he wants to be when he grows up, this is a great opportunity. So, yeah, so we've done some fun things, we've done local grown celery, green beans, wax beans, the corns, we still do the micro greens, the potatoes, so we're still, we're still working on that. May 9th, we did our farmer showcase here in Glendon, the Department of Aid came out of the news media, and it was just a great opportunity for our farmers to visit with the kids, and the, and the department, and just a whole networking aspect of it. Summer feeding, first time this year in Deworth, we did just over 6,000 breakfasts and over 9,000 lunches through the summer. So, it was a great opportunity, I think, for the district to be part of. Fresh fruit veggie programs, the state says it's still pending, so there, I, I don't even know what to say there, it just kind of sits there with the state. So, on to the new year, lots of things going on this year. Tracy's childcare program has given us the opportunity to apply for CACFP, which is a program for us to feed the kiddos their breakfast and lunch. So, we have been approved for that, and that has been rolling out. We have started up our new POS system, it's up and going, it's had a few hiccups, but we're working through them. And then we're going to start hopefully the next month, moving on to the backside of it, which will be, everything will go on online, it'll be electronic, our nutrition analysis, our production records, everything, you know, I won't just retain the knowledge, the district will have the knowledge. So, we're, we're working through, that's going to take a little bit, because we have to put all our ingredients, I mean, everything in there, but we're going to get there. So, that will be going. This year, we did our new online meal benefit application, families can go right online and apply, 85% of our applications were submitted through that process this year. So, that really streamlined the process there versus having to look at all these paper forms. School pay, as families go on to school pay and deposit money into their lunch account balances, that's been a little wild for us this year. I've been getting a lot of calls about my student has $18,000 in their lunch account. I, I think we're getting that rain, and John with IT has got involved with school pay and had some conversations in, as it floods in school pays and that, that they're trying to work through, so I'm hoping to have that result. If parents deposit money into school pay, it is pulling over correctly into our per year, it's just what school pay is showing parents that's in, in the account. So, I'm hoping that that can be fixed pretty soon. September 20, oh, that's right, September 2022, Brittany did a grant through Cass, through Lakes Co-op for two freezers to start a leftover program. So, that's been kind of in the works, going, trying to get the freezers up and going. Cass Clay Hunger Coalition has talked with me about partnering with, they worked with Fargo, Morehead, West Fargo, and different districts. So, I'm currently in the process of reviewing what they would all be asking of us, but they would be providing containers and different things, the funding on, on that end for it. So, I haven't given them 100%, yes, we'll, we'll partner with you on this, because I just want to review that, but I, I do think that this is a great partnership to have. So, vendor supply, for the most part, it's stable, except for milk cartons. We have been informed by Cass Clay that this is just going to be a good market there. Right now, as of today, 1% milk cartons are stable, but tomorrow, it could be something different. So, I've just been working with different vendors to see who's got what, in terms of the, the, and I do know that later this week or the beginning of next week, the Glendon state will have to go into gallon jobs, I've got some services that we'll, we'll use, and then we'll go back to 1%, cartons, but until Cass Clay can get this supply chain issue resolved, this is just something that we're, we're going to have right now. So, so that's going to potentially be going on. The other thing that we've come across is peaches, you know, commodity, there is a freeze down south, and peaches have been in shortage, so we won't see much for peaches this year. concessions, we have started working with Tracy this year and providing items for concessions. We've kind of got a few different things going on, so we do some items for concessions, we're going to be doing the meal for the dad and daughter dance, Katie Omen, we are providing the sandwiches for the out of town games, and then we have done three big meal events for the football parent groups, so we've, we've kind of really wanted to support the different parts of the school district and support our kids, so we have been involved in, in that. And then the last thing I thought that we could kind of highlight, highlight on is I looked at the first 26 days of school last year and compared it to the first 26 days of school this year. And then what I did is I averaged, when we start the school year, it's always kind of slow a little bit, you know, and then at this time of year, it really starts to pick up. Stays pretty, pretty solid until about January, it slows down a little bit, then it picks back up, and then right before prom, our participation kind of decreases, I think everybody goes on diets, so it decreases a little bit, but then it picks right back up. But our breakfast average daily for the district last year is 305, and right now, we're running 399. So, we're at about a 24% increase in participation this year. Our lunch for our district participation was 812 last year, and we're at 1,056 right now. And then when I look at the district a la carte, sales a la carte, we brought back this year at the Glendon, so we do some drinks and some chips and some basic things. Last year, they, they did a ticket process here, where kids kept coming in to ticket, and I, I didn't quite understand that whole thing, so, you know, we kind of did away with that, and the kids come in, and as they're going through the line, they'll get seconds now. Last year, for the first 26 days of district a la carte sales were $734 and some change, and so far this year, it's $7,939 and some change. So, yeah, we've got a lot of different things going on, and I'm excited.
Question, with the a la carte sales, where does that money go? Like, that's kind of a big jump, like, I mean, because obviously, like, there's a profit to the bottles of water and juice or whatever, it's sold, where does that use for?
Yeah, it's just all, it's, well, it's all in that fund, so as the year goes on, we'll have to see what, what happens with that, but it's all through food, food service. If you look in our budget, it has nothing to do with our general fund, that's its own fund, it sits there.
Yeah, you can't, you can't move that money, you have to just keep it in the spiral.
That's a food service dollar, so.
Shannon, what do you attribute that jump to?
A la carte sales?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, okay, so I think there's kind of two parts to that. One is we are bringing in the chips and the burlap jars and the, and the bottled water, but I think the other part is, is when I, when I first came, and I was looking at how they were doing their seconds, I mean, we're asking kids to come at 8:00 in the morning and get a ticket, and then a lot of times, they would come during the run, and they get out, so that they got a ticket, and then kids are just like, I'm not, I'm not coming at 8:00 in the morning. So, when, when we did away with that, and we just let them come, and they're coming through, now it's a convenience factor, you know, so that's why I think we see that big.
So, seconds go on a la carte as well?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's the way for that, yeah.
Anything that's not considered a la carte?
Do you feel like there's more participation at the main school, like the older classes, or they, or they leave?
Our last ones were kind of crazy.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of crazy, but it's a good crazy.
So, yeah.
And I was wondering if Petro served four for fours kind of hit. It's now like three for four or four for five or something, it's changed.
Oh, they changed it, okay.
I can't remember what's always said, but the, the numbers aren't four for four. It's cute.
In the mornings, like, I'm, I mean, a little old school, but we still have to do a head count, so that's kind of how you knew, had an idea of how much food you were going to have to make, is that, are you just kind of going off each day, how much you've served the day before, or?
So, when you do your head counts, they don't work, they're, they, because what happens is, so, the, the middle school would kind of be there, the high school never submit them, and then in the elementary, we're asking kids to decide at 8:00 in the morning, and they come to the line, and they're crying, because now their friend is having hot, or hot. So, we have to log, we're required by the state, the USDA, we have to write down how many pizzas, how many sandwiches, and there are much more accurate prediction to what, what we're going to use. Now, can things change? Yes, so a good example is Friday, we had chicken patty and garlic cheesy bread, and I'm thinking, oh, it's chicken patty, we haven't had chicken, oh no, it was garlic cheesy bread. So, you know, I had to go back, and I had to put 300 more in, but it's just making sure we have that inventory on site, and I know you to do that, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know, I, it was maybe just getting used to the numbers this year, since they are more, but I kind of heard they're maybe glitched a little bit, and didn't have enough of the menu item that was published or.
I think what we were seeing at the beginning of the year was, A, they did get caught off guard, I think the kitchen got caught off guard on what their participation is going to be, and I think, B, part of it was going to be, this is what we're going to do, and this is all we're going to do, and, and that has been resolved, so.
As you guys know, there's been a lot of change in the kitchen with personnel, and some of that was necessary, that Shannon talked about here and addressed, to make some improvements, I guess. All good people, all hardworking people, wonderful people, it just was, yeah, it's a different environment. It just was, yeah, it's a different environment when you do a lot of cook from scratch.
A lot more work.
It, it is, it's just, it's just more work. There's a lot more involved and I would say, and so bear with this, but I'd say in the last two to three weeks, it has just gotten better and better and more stable and going, you know? We had some bumps, but I really appreciate the hard work that Shannon and her team have done to get us now where we are today. So thank you.
I'm not sure you're here at night for concessions, but you'll see people walking with stacks of scotcheroo. There are like six of them, these are just the best, so they've been a welcome addition. So thank you for working with the concessions. It's really nice to, when people are here multiple nights a week, to be able to go grab a sandwich or a scotcheroo, something different. And so we appreciate you and all the hard work you do, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate my staff. It comes in, you know, yesterday here in Glendon, just to shout out to Truventures, been fantastic. Yesterday we were two manatee and Glenn, you know, was six and, you know, people getting sick. So, you know, staff has really stepped up and really helped out and, and make it possible. So I, I appreciate them every day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, 6.3 Board Committee reports. I know that Brittany had sent out an email on the DLT. Laura, is there anything you want to add to that?
I didn't look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I haven't.
Yeah, yeah, so basically what we're doing with that, and she shared that too, is that at each one of the DLT meetings, we're going to talk about a priority. So we talked about priority one and we really broke it down so that team could really understand it better. So when the public hits them up and says, well, what is this? They have more answers and more understanding, so they can ask questions. It's a living, breathing document, like I've said many times. And then now the next meeting we'll go over priority two and then over priority three, priority three. So as we, as we meet, we're going to work through that district leadership team, I'm sorry, work with the district leadership team to evaluate the, the strategic plan, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and she just talked about, Amy just asked about those school lunches and this principal starting their walkthroughs and crossing guarded El, Doorwood Elementary has been helpful, so. All right, David, committee, you sent out a very nice email, thank you for doing that.
I think the budget itself, set preliminary budget and Shannon and Marcus are looking at taking that down as we go through the year. We had a bit of staff who and state as far as our numbers and they were overpaying us, fairly substantial sum, which we've accounted for now. It's just going to make things a little tighter than we had hoped. And so we're dealing with that. Fortunately, we've budgeted conservatively and budget standpoint, we're going to be.
Thank you. All right, C, Personnel Committee, just a quick, we're still in negotiations with certified staff. We need to come with, come off the meeting to meet with them and really know, really update. We're going to revisit briefly afterwards. Do either of you have anything to add?
Just that with the budget being a little tighter, might be a little bit of a challenge, but, you know, it's a good group of folks and we want to work with them to get something done. So we've been close at times and so we're just trying to figure out how to get to everyone's priorities.
Thank you. 6.4 Superintendent Warren?
Yeah, excuse me, October 23rd, which is our next meeting, sorry. We have a middle school choir concert at 6:00.
So we need to change?
Yeah, so do we want to change the time? We can still be here, I think. I just don't, you know, we're going to use the theater, so I don't know if people will be coming in here too. So depending on that time change, we may want to relocate even to the conference room, high school conference room, just so we don't get caught up in all the noise out here.
Laura, do you have a middle schooler choir?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Both of us?
So I don't know if, is it, should we go at 5:00? Should we go at 5:15? You know, I don't know if people get in here and that, 5:15 probably is better than 5:00. I, I don't know. Most of our meetings are around.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock's the concert, so if you have a friend that knows, you can.
How about, because Brittany had sent that email out wanting to know if facilities and transportation could meet before?
Oh, yeah.
But we could.
Uh, does Brittany have somebody in there? No. So we could meet after. It's, who is that? It's you, me and.
Micah.
And like, is that okay for you if we meet after instead? Maybe, would that be okay for you?
It's fine for me, I just don't know if it was going to work.
Oh, yeah, that's what she asked.
Yeah, she asked if we could go before.
But if we're, we moved the meeting up, then the meeting.
Then maybe she can, if that's possible, then you can get to your concert and then we can have that meeting maybe.
So we could just do an email or on our text chain.
Yep. How about?
Just to see if we do move the meeting up to like 5:00 or 5:15 and Brittany can still meet afterwards. She was thinking seven was too late, but maybe six would work for her.
Yeah, and if worst case scenario, if everybody can make a 5:00, hopefully she can be there for a little bit. And if she can't stay the whole time, you know, we can still have two or less.
And she's still saying as though six o'clock was going to work for her for the board meeting. So if we board at five, then we did.
I'd say board at five because I, even though I think we say we'll get over here by six.
Then all of a sudden we don't.
Then we don't. So let's do board at five and then facility transportation at six. And then Brooke, can you send out a Google lead on the calendar thing? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next thing there is the DC trip. So I was at the AESA conference in DC. When, when I joined this policy fellowship, I wanted to make sure that, okay, you know, as a superintendent, you're always scared, what don't you know? You don't know, you don't know. And so the more connections you make, the more you learn. So one of the things that's unfortunate is our federal government is not, is not funding our special ed to the level of other states. There's a formula out there that's longer than any algebraic equation you've seen. But the breakdown of how they send funds to states for students with special needs and we are the third, we're at the bottom. We are the third ranking state in the United States as far as funding from the federal government. Our average student funding from the federal government is $1,806. If you pop across the river, North Dakota's a little over 26, almost 2,700 a student. South Dakota is at 2,400 and something. Wisconsin is, Iowa is, we, Minnesota, Oklahoma, Nevada, the bottom three. So part of the discussion with Amy Clovishar and Tina Smith and Michelle Fishbach was, this is, this is not good and we need you people to step up and help us, right? It's the federal government, which is a little slower than the state government, which is a little bit slower than the local government, right? So we understand that too. So you learn that this is kind of how it works and there's staffers and whatnot. But that, that was a big piece of our conversation with them. The other one was teacher shortage. And what kind of packages are, are they putting together at the federal level to create, whether it's loan forgiveness, whether it's paying for school on the front end? We talked about, let's not do loan forgiveness because it hardly ever happens and people don't apply for it and then they don't vote. It doesn't get used. They allocate billions and it doesn't get used because the hoops don't get jumped through to get it. I said, we started talking to them, let's get someone set up for the front end, much like a GI bill. Well, if there's GI bill for monetary, teacher shortage is what they say is runs from the governments as well. Can there be some similar programs set up like that? So it's a great discussion with them, you know? Again, it's the federal government, it's slower than the state government. Anyway, so those things were good. The other takeaway I got is because of the networking, the group that went, we had assistant superintendents, we had other superintendents, we had the provost from M State, from Morehead. He manages the Morehead site, Fergus Falls DL and Wadena site, he was there. So partnerships with them and how do we create that relationship? One of the things that came from it is we have some other grant opportunities that I shared with, for special ed. I shared with Mary Ann on Monday. And, yeah, I'm very optimistic. It'll be something that we can't get this year, but it's something that we'll be able to tap into the future years. And it's, it has the potential to bring in anywhere from $100,000 to $300,000 to help offset some special ed costs. So pretty substantial. And that was the other piece of why I wanted to be a part of this and I appreciate you guys supporting that. And that's my job then too, is your principal, or sorry, is your superintendent, is to find those opportunities. And that's really, I don't know, it came from that. Yes, we did shook hands with Amy Clovishar, shook hands with Tina Smith. Michelle Fishbach was not there because you maybe know there was a House of Representatives situation where somebody got voted out. So that really tweaked that whole, the whole house was in kind of a, what do we do now? And they were understandable because they can't do any action without a speaker. So that happened right before, right when we got there. So that was kind of chaotic. Saw a lot of history, right? That, that, some of you have attended or been able to visit, watch DC, it's a special place. So did have some time in the evening to do some running around on a bike, rented the bikes and cruised around with other guys and got to see some really neat places. So, yeah, again, very good experience. Last thing is Carrie Westcard, and I did already talk about it. I forgot that I had it down here as well. But kudos to her again and congratulations to her on her accomplishment. She is an extremely dedicated teacher. She loves her class and she loves her kids and it shows. She is so dedicated, so. Anything for me, any questions for me? You guys also know the Kip, we have a meeting with Kip tonight, so now any part of one problem, so.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 7.1, this is the approval of the regular meeting on September 25th. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? I got Laura over here, thank you Nicole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, Laura, keep claims and accounts, please. Also included within the consent agenda is our treasurer's monthly budget report, approving the resignation of Wayne Johnson, custodian effective September 25th, for the resignation of Tia Noonan, food service effective October 6, 2023, approving the donation from the Rebel Fishing Club and the amount of $250 to be used for a school fied, and approve the donation from Jessica Road and the amount of $100 to be used for middle school PBIS. Do we have a motion? So I got Nicole over here. Amy, you want a second? Any discussion or questions? There are no discussion or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.1 Certified Seniority List, this is the second reading of the 2023-24 Certified Seniority List. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
I got Micah down there. Micah, loud and proud, loud and proud. Any questions or discussion? I know this has been posted, it's been shared and there's been no concerns, so. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.2 This is extended day field trip with the baseball team to Elk Point, South Dakota on April 19th through the 20th of 2024. Do we have a motion? Good job. Love it. Give me a second. Now I got Dave over here. Now they're all loud and proud, now they're all loud and proud. Any questions or discussion on this trip? I'm assuming this is a tournament that they're going to, that they've asked to go to?
Yeah, it's, I, I haven't dug into this one much. I know Katie just asked about it and, yeah. It's an opportunity to, with their club and with the money they raised, to do something special with the players, so.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.3 We have a non-certified contract for Brandy Larson. This is a paraprofessional starting at class two, step five. We'll, for October 3rd, do a motion. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.4 This is a resolution for a Form B grant to the Minnesota High School League Foundation. Do we get a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. And the floor resolving is Amy.
Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of Doris Glendon Felton Public School recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools to provide seminars, training, training opportunities or support for specific school functions for students, faculty members, officials and others who are involved in athletic and fine art programs. Therefore, be resolved that the governing board of Doris Glendon Felton School supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form B grant.
All right, we have a motion. Mine, Nicole, second by David, this is a resolution, so we'll do a roll call vote. Just sign a single yes or no. Laura, David?
Nope.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Nicole?
Yes.
Micah?
Yes.
Beautiful, thank you all. All right, 9.5 Is a non-certified contract for Rebecca Nor, food service class three, step 10, effective October 23rd. Do we have a motion? By Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Micah, any questions or discussion?
Where, so when it is hired, you know, there's how many spots remaining in the kitchen?
Okay. Still short two?
Okay, is that after today's discussion or anyway? Yeah, I'll, I'll agree, there's two. There is, yeah. We're in this, so we replaced it once, we accepted the resignation for, we accepted a position, that filled that and we still have a couple of shortfalls, yes. But, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Right, the X board meeting will be Monday, October 23rd at 5:00 PM in the high school conference room. And then to follow will be facilities and transportation, the conclusion of the meeting approximately 6:00. Anything else, team, that we need to discuss? All right, meeting's adjourned. It is 6:46.
So when, when we meet with?